Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September 29th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Grino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo, absent. And Counselor President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 8th.
So move.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number three. The City Council will present Irma Achituloh with a certificate of commendation in recognition and celebration of her 90th birthday.
Happy 90th birthday. Oops, sorry, I mean 30th birthday, Irma.
Thank you. Thank you.
90 years is an amazing milestone. And throughout those years, Irma has shown so much kindness, generosity, and dedication to our community. From organizing bocce games, to giving back through Irma's boutique, to the wonderful coffee hours she hosts at her home, she has truly touched many, many lives. Irma, we celebrate not just your birthday, but the wonderful person that you are. So today, we give you our certificate of commendation, and it states, "An acknowledgement and recognition of a milestone 90th birthday, which was celebrated on August 4th, 1935. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Irma Achituloh. The City Council honors and celebrates your milestone achievement as testament to a life filled with love, dedication, and wisdom. Your life stands as a legacy of resilience, cherished memories, and countless contributions to your family, friends, and community. Further, the City Council offers its warmest congratulations and sends its best wishes for continued health, happiness, and many more joyful years ahead. The certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts on behalf of its citizens this 29th day of September in the year of our Lord 2025 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 249th."
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Counselors, come up.
The birthday that I didn't want anyone to know about.
Okay, no one watches our council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, we love you.
Thank you, one and all. I'm speechless and overwhelmed.
I just want to say that I got to know Irma from my time at the Revere Senior Center, and she is such an inspiration to the seniors and to the general public and all residents. She's so involved, she's so dedicated, like Counselor Swaya said, whether it was through Irma's boutique or the bocce league at the Senior Center, she's so involved, and it was a pleasure to get to know her at the Senior Center and to see what she can do behind the scenes. Thank you.
Wow.
Happy birthday, Irma.
For someone who has never lost for words, I'm certainly overwhelmed, and all I can say is, thank you, one and all. This is quite a day and quite a month, and as I said again, for the birthday that I didn't want anyone to know about, I reached this milestone, and as our doctors tell us, be grateful you made it to this age also. So thank you again, one and all.
Calendar item number four. Michael Wells, Director of Municipal Inspections, will appear before the City Council to discuss the rooming house ordinance and the methods used to identify illegal rooming houses and enforcement procedures.
Mr. Wells?
Lewis? Good evening, counselors. Michael Wells, Director of Municipal Inspection, City of Revere, joined by Building Commissioner Louis Carignaro and Vincent Argenzio from our short-term rental office. I know there has been some discussion recently regarding enforcement of rooming houses. Does fall under building, and I will turn it over right now to Building Commissioner Carignaro.
Louis Carignaro, Building Commissioner, again. So, rooming houses are very disruptive to the neighborhood. They're very noisy, they draw a lot of people to one house, they're very loud. But it's difficult for us to enforce. If we get a complaint and we have to send out letters, as you all know, letter one, letter two, letter three, it takes, it could take six months before we actually get into the house. That's if they let us into the house. If not, we have to get a warrant to get in, and then once you're in the house, it's hard to, it's hard to figure out if people are related or not. You can't ask someone for a document that shows relation, like if they're cousins, or a son, or a mother. So, but we do write them up, and we do find them, but from my understanding is, if everybody's on the same lease, then we can't, then that's okay, then that's, they're allowed to live there, even though they're not related. But we do find them, and we find them under 21D, which, as you guys know, doesn't really have any teeth. We used to do 40U, but from my understanding is that we're not allowed to do 40U anymore, but I'm hearing that we can go back to 40U. And right now with the new Airbnb short-term rental office, they have a system that can identify online ads. So we're working on a way to find, just based off the ad, so we don't have to get into the house. I don't know, you want to say anything?
Sure.
Vincent Argenzio, Short-Term Rental Office. So, up to this point, our software mainly focused on rentals that were 30 days or less, short-term in the city, and our software was programmed to only identify within that range. So on occasion, what would meet the definition of a rooming house, so more than three, four unrelated persons in a rental house, a apartment building, that were renting rooms not on the same lease, not renting the entire unit, but just a section of that one unit, we would identify them and take enforcement action, because as I'm sure everyone's aware, under the short-term rental ordinance, you cannot rent a room, you need to rent the entire unit. So, we have identified a handful of them in the past that were renting short-term and taken enforcement through the short-term rental ordinance. Leading up to this, knowing that we were going to have this discussion, I did speak with our software company about getting a little peek, changing our parameters to the software, to see if we could expand to month-to-month and long-term rentals, and see if we could then sort and try to find listings that were renting a bedroom or a partial unit to multiple parties, not one group of individuals together, that, like Lewis said, would be on the same lease, so individual arrangements for each person in a partial unit. We have, up to this point, it's been about a week, we have been able to identify some of them. Again, no one knows how many rooming houses there are in the city, so maybe we're seeing all of them, maybe we're seeing a handful of them, maybe we're seeing a good amount of them. After scanning for about a week, we have identified what could be 30, roughly between 20 and 30, could meet the definition of a rooming house. Again, this is not what the software was originally designed for, but we have started working with the company, tweaking it to see if we could apply it at a larger scale to other rentals, specifically what would meet the definition of a rooming house. And now that it has been combing listings, trying to match images to properties, we have been getting some of them. Again, how many there are in the city at this point, no one really knows the amount, but we are, we have had the ability to identify some of them up to this point.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know you all know that I have a rooming house next door to me. I have 31 people living in a single-family house with about eight cars. You, one of, I think it was Lewis, Lewis said that you can't, if there's a lease, then you can't, you know, break the lease, you know, you can't. So, but if, if the lease, say you have five members of the same family in there, and you have all their licenses, okay, and they're on the lease, but you have other people just living in the rooms with no leases and no licenses, I mean, how do you, how do you catch them? So, I have a family next to me, there's probably, I don't know, maybe six or seven, they're all related, but then I have 20 other people living there without, they walk to the tea, they don't have licenses, they don't have cars, they don't have anything, but they're living in the, you know, the house. So, I mean, how do you, how do you go about saying, okay, they're on the lease, but what about the other people that aren't?
If there's other people that aren't on the lease, we write them up.
How do you know?
But when I, when I went to the, that house, there was only, we go during the day, no one's in the house. I'm looking at beds, there's one bed in every bedroom, if I see more beds, I'll write that up, and if I see people that aren't on the lease, I'll write it up. But if they come in after I'm not there, we can go back if there's another complaint, but it's, it's hard to enforce.
The day before you come in, people are running out with their mattresses, and that's a fact, and I have pictures of it. And when you leave and inspect the houses, guess what? They come back. After you, after you inspect, they come back and they're, they're doing the same thing that they did. The other thing I'd like to know is, does the rooming houses have to be owner-occupied?
No.
Okay. And one, yes?
Yeah, rooming houses, they're not allowed, except in certain zones. So, that's basically, that house is an apartment that's being leased out. It's not considered a rooming house unless they're renting out rooms. But if they're all under one lease, it's considered an apartment.
So you said you knew about 30 houses that are rooming houses. How do we stop them?
If.
You know, I mean, the guy next door to me got fined $67,000 because he had, he had locks on every single room that he had. He put the kitchen downstairs in the cellar, and he took the kitchen outside, out of the second floor, the first floor, and now he's got bedrooms on every single floor. It's, it's just, it's crazy.
It's hard, it's hard to enforce, but with, with the new system, if it's online, we can go after them that way. Maybe we can try getting to the houses a little bit faster, if there's a way to get in faster, but.
Is there an ordinance, or is that a law, that you have to wait 30 days before you go into a house? Because if it's an ordinance, we can change it.
I don't believe it's an ordinance.
Okay, so is it a law?
I believe it's a law.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
That's, that's how it was, it was set up for those letters to go out within certain times.
So if it is an ordinance, can we, and we change it, would that help you?
Maybe. We have to, we have to discuss it with the lawyers and see what they say, because if they, if the owners don't let us in the house, then it has to go to Chelsea District Court to get a warrant, and usually they give them, but I'm not sure how much, what the legality of that is and how much time we have to give them.
Thank you, Lewis. Guys.
Counsel, just to piggyback off what you were saying, as far as, you know, when we go for enforcement, everything's gone, hard to identify, same thing happens with illegal apartments. You know, we have properties with the same illegal apartments, been torn out three, four different times, you know, so it goes to that road too, where, you know, it's not just the rooming house and renting of rooms, it's the illegal apartments as well, that, you know, same house has had the same illegal apartment torn out four different times. So, you know, when, as soon as we're gone, it's hard for us to enforce what happens after we leave.
And I just have to say, I commend you guys, because I remember when this first started with the Airbnbs, we had 250 in, I know, just in Beauchamp, we had, I think, 125 or whatever. I think, what are we down to now with the software that we purchased, 80?
In, in the entire city, in Beauchamp, it's about 20.
20.
So, in, in the entire city, it's around 80. It varies from day to day, but it's around that number, and Beauchamp, it's at its highest, it's around 20, and lowest seasonally that are active, it's about 15.
Well, that's an excellent job. I thank you, all three of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Carignaro, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Argenzio. I know you have a very busy department, and you're doing an extremely great job. The enforcement right now, as I understand it, it's, it's a system of four letters, 30 days, 30, 30, and then a final letter goes out?
Yeah, it's, it's three letters.
Okay. So if we were to move to 40U, and at a minimum, if this software can pick up people that are advertising, they essentially have, I guess, shot themselves in the foot. They're advertising these rooms, so you could, and correct me if I'm wrong, do it as the same short-term rental, go right there, put a cease and desist, start fining, and at least we would be capturing the ones that are actively advertising.
Yes.
Okay, so would you suggest that we go to 40U, and then at least we'll be able to keep it in-house, and we don't have to go through the court system?
Yes, I, I think 40U is, is way better than 21D. We used to do 40U, and then we found out that we couldn't do it anymore.
Right.
But now I'm hearing that we can, we can go back, so.
Okay.
I would like it to be under 40U.
Okay, and even the fining system, if we're unsure, and you send out, send out a fine, then the onus would be on the property owner to come appeal it. They could come in, explain themselves, so if they're family members, they could give you proof of that, and you could get, get away with the ticket, otherwise. So that would put the onus on the property owner, rather than on ISD, to keep sending letters, sending letters, getting search warrants?
I, I agree, but then you're writing a ticket with kind of no evidence, kind of? But you have, but you have a complaint, I don't know.
Right.
If we could write a ticket like that.
Well, if, if, say you sent a ticket, and they didn't answer in 30 days, then send a violation, because they didn't answer.
I would be in favor of that, definitely, because the rooming houses are definitely, they're disruptive to the neighborhood.
Right, I know that seems to be the issue of the day, and as I hear from residents, that's during the campaign, you walk around, and people start pointing, there's 30 people there, there's 20 people there, so I think moving to 40U certainly would expedite things, and I think put you in a better position, instead of being tediously sending out all these letters, you know, to no avail.
Yes, I, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here tonight and taking the time to, to answer questions and give us some information. I want to say upfront, I know that you're, the job that you have to do this, it must be frustrating at times, because I think you have some obstacles in front of you that maybe prevent you from doing things the way that you would like to do them. So I'm in favor to try to get anything in place that would help you do your job more effectively. But that being the case, I did receive a complaint, it was very disheartening. A woman, a resident, did say that she tried to call and tried to report one of these rooming houses, and unfortunately, she was told, there's nothing we can do about it. And so then she called me and said, what do you mean, there's nothing, you know, they can do about it? And I said, well, we're going to have the discussion, I'll try to find out. So what advice or what recommendations can you make for residents if they want to report these? How should they go about doing so? What department should they contact? And any information you could give in that regard would be great. Thank you.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure who they talk to, but usually, if people complain, we, we send a letter out right away, no questions asked. I mean, it doesn't even have, they don't even have to state their name, but we don't take all the complaints, they go through 311, so I'm not sure how they're handling that.
So if she didn't go through 311, would it be the recommendation to call the building department or the short-term rental office, or what, or should they call 311? Is your recommendation that they should start there with 311 to open a ticket?
We usually send all the complaints to 311. So it's on record.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all three for coming. You know that I'm dealing with a lot of that in Ward 5, especially that situation that we had on Wadsworth. My problem with, when it's reported, there's a letter that goes out, and when that letter goes out, it basically says, I'm going to come and inspect the premises. So when you send them a letter stating that you're going out there to inspect the premises, what happens is, that night before, they're pulling all the mattresses out of the house, as you saw what happened on Wadsworth. So, the first time you guys went in there, there was only, what, six bedrooms or whatever it was? And then the second time we went in there, there was 12. So it, it's, I think there's got to be a different way for people to report it in a different way. Maybe what Counselor McKenna said, put it in, changing the ordinance, so you guys have the backing that you need to go in there and do what you have to do to stop it. Because it's getting to a point right now that they're taking control and they're, it's too much, it's too much. People don't know, like Counselor Kelly said, people don't know who to complain to, and when they do complain, it goes, it sometimes falls on deaf ears, so they do go to the counselors. And then when we take control of it, it's, it's still, we can't do what we want to do. So I think we, as a council in general, has to think of a new ordinance to help you guys do your job, because I know you, you work diligently to get this done. I mean, I call Vincent constantly, I call you constantly, and I call Michael constantly. And you guys are right on top of it, but again, your hands are tied. So maybe it is time for us to look at an ordinance change to, to help you do your job better. And thank you so much for being here, and thank you for being as diligent as you are.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you guys for being here tonight, but I'll tell you, I wouldn't want either one of your jobs, because it's, it's, it's an impossible task. It really is, and it's disheartening, especially from the people I hear from that, you know, are living next to one of these houses. It's just, can't give an honest answer. Now, we're talking about ordinances and stuff, and we've got to be careful that we're not screwing the law with something we make up here, so, I mean, whatever we do, we have to have strong legal advice on, and, but it would be helpful if we could do something that is a little more effective than giving them a notice that we're coming to inspect so they can empty the place out, and, and, you know, then we're going to hear from the neighbor the next day, they're back, you know? It's, it's just, it really is disheartening, and I don't envy you for having this job. I know you've got a lot of other duties to do, but this is one that's a, it's a tough one, and thanks for the, thanks for the effort.
I can assure you, it's just as frustrating. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, Mike. I said, I, you know, it's just as frustrating for us and our department as it is for the residents that, you know, have to endure this, and as far as the counselors haven't taken those complaints as well. So, you know, yes, we're an enforcing agency, our department, we're not the police, you know, we're not the fire department, I tell people that, you know, you call 911, they're going to show up to your house right away, you're going to get an instant result. Unfortunately, we don't get instant results, and I know I say that a lot, but it's the fact. You know, we, some property owners, you send them a letter, you get the call the very next day. Some property owners, we have to go through that whole, you know, letter after letter after letter, you know, to threaten them with a search warrant to come into their property. So it is frustrating, I agree, but eventually, we get a result, you know, it's just not as instantaneous as we would all like to see.
Thank you. Counselor Grino Swaya.
Thank you for the leeway. I have a question. Do you think that if we, if, if you check to see if the utilities spike, if that's a way, like an indicator, to see if it would be used as a rooming house or absentee landlords?
I mean, I, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's tough, because every house can fit a certain amount of people by law, by code. So just because their water's going up, I don't know if we could find based off that.
But if it's tripling, what if it's quadrupling?
I don't know, we still have to get in there to see if they're renting out rooms, because they could still legally have so many people for that house.
But would that be an indication that you could?
To check it.
Check it.
Yeah, maybe. And if, anything that we can come up with, maybe.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to help to, to get this coming to fruition here and actually stop these rooming houses.
Anything that we can do, I'm, I'm for. If we can throw out a fine and put the onus on them to, to do something, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city counselors? Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to introduce a motion that these housing violations, certificates of fitness be moved to 40U. I know it will have to go to Subcommittee, but we can further discuss it. It seems that no matter what we do, going 40U will expedite things and make things easier. I know other surrounding cities and towns use 40U, so that at least can be a basis. And as Mr. Argenzio said, if this software has identified some people that are advertising, we could, once this is, makes it through the process, we could immediately start fining them and shutting them down. So at least we're moving forward, and we're not spinning our wheels.
Are we sure we can use 40U?
I, I know other cities, am I correct in saying other cities and towns?
I think it's something we should, you know, look further into with our attorneys, just to.
Okay.
Just to ensure that we can do it properly.
Okay, so if we move it to Subcommittee, the attorneys can come and, okay?
Absolutely.
Is that, okay?
Yep.
So I'd like to introduce that motion.
Madam Clerk?
It would be, Counselor Argenzio, much like the same thing that was just in your Legislative Affairs Subcommittee, you would be deleting the words "noise ordinance" and replacing it with "rooming house ordinance."
Yes, and also certificates of fitness, I might as well put that in there too. Any, any housing code violation? Is that appropriate?
I would probably need help right now.
Okay.
Before I have the city solicitor.
Okay.
It's up to you, it's up to the committee.
What? Okay, do you want to have, instead of doing that, have the city solicitor appear at our next meeting?
It's, it's up to the city council if they want to do it.
It's up to you, Consular.
Yeah, let's make a motion, let's send it to Subcommittee, and the, and the city solicitor can appear there, and if it can't be done, then it'll be dead.
Okay.
Can you provide a recommendation to the city council and also that?
Right.
So it'd be on the motion by Consular Argenzio to approve, that the city council approve a special act permitting the City of Revere to establish penalties and liens for rooming house and certificate of occupancy ordinance violations.
All in favor, all opposed? So what?
Thank you.
Oh, yes, this will be going to Legislative Affairs.
Very good. Perfect.
Public hearings, calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending Title 13, the Revere Revised Ordinances Relative to Stormwater Management.
Good evening.
My bad. My name is Asa Dunn. I'm in the Engineering Department over at 319 Charger Street.
Hi, I'm Thea Kilkeny. I work for Weston and Sampson Engineers, a consultant to the city's engineering department. Specifically, I do stormwater management assistance.
Thank you very much.
We are here regarding some updates to the stormwater management portion of the city code, as well as a few updates to Chapter 17 in the zoning. All of these updates are required by the MS4 permit or the municipal separate storm sewer system permit issued by EPA. It is a NIPD's permit, and all of these requirements, all of the language updates that we have suggested are required by the MS4 permit or in support of those requirements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any proponents? Anyone here in favor? Proponents? Hearing them, closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone here against in opposition? Hearing none, we'll close that side. City councilors? No questions. Okay, this will be referred to Legislative Affairs. Thank you.
Calendar item number six, hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to stormwater management.
Okay, again, these updates are in support of the, getting the city into compliance with the requirements in the MS4 permit.
Thank you very much. Any proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none, closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone here in opposition? Closing that side. City councilors? Nope. And this will also, this will be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called as ordered on a loan order in the amount of $5 million for the Lower Broadway Water Main Replacement Project.
How you doing, all? Chris Charamella, 319 Charger, Superintendent Public Works. So this loan order is for the replacement of Lower Broadway, which is the water main from Ambrose Street going down to Ward Street near BJ's. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It's a six-inch water main, well undersized for Broadway, well over 100 years old, and we constantly have issues with our new deal, as I'm sure everyone's well aware.
Thank you, Chris. Any proponents?
Good evening, Council. Rich Viski, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I'm here to speak in favor of the bond order that will provide the city with the funds to make this necessary infrastructure improvement. Happy to answer any questions on the bond order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viski. Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone here against? Closing that side. City councilors? Consular Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Superintendent. When is this work going to be starting? And how, how long do you think it'll go on?
So this will be starting in the spring, and I would say approximately two months. It, it is a little bit of an undertaking, since we're going through the circle over there, so. But after this, we'll be out of your hair and we'll remain off Broadway for a certain time.
As long as the new deal is taken care of.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Any other city councilors? Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $5 million for the Lower Broadway Water Main Replacement Project? Consular Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Grino-Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Harramio?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Consular McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Novosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Consular President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number eight, hearing called as ordered on an ordinance repealing Section 9.12.030, posting political signs of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere.
Do we have anyone here, proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing none, close that side. Any opponents? Anyone here in opposition? Okay, closing that side. City councilors? Consular Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We spoke about this last meeting. I just, I don't understand having an unenforceable ordinance on the books. Doing some more research, someone who wanted to put signage on their property that would violate this, this ordinance, would then have standing to complain to the city. It's unconstitutional, it was proven to be unconstitutional in 2014 by the United States Supreme Court. And to keep it on the books, in my opinion, is an attempt to fool people into thinking that we have a rule that, you know, controls the political signs that happen every year. I do want to say that I don't see a lot of signage out compared to other years this year. And, you know, people have been very good about, oh, I'm getting the gavel already? Oh, my goodness. Madam Clerk! Anyway, so that's my piece about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Novosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm against this, and yes, they may say it's unconstitutional, but we're not totally stopping from people, people from doing it, we're just trying to control it. Now, I live in, I've lived in Revere for 78 years, and it's always bothered me that there are political signs up 365 days of the year, used to be. And 12 years ago, when we first put this in effect, everybody on this council thought it was the right thing to do to try to keep our city clean and not look like trash with all these signs staying up all year round. Now, we're not totally stopping people from doing this, we're just controlling the timing of it. And it's only during political seasons. And for the last 12 years, I would say it's worked. People understand that they can put them out a month before the primaries, the preliminary election, and they have to take them down within a week or two after the election, because there's no sense of keeping them up. I think it's not necessarily a state law, but it's something that we have as a policy, and it is a rule because of city ordinance on it. So I would say, leave it on the books, it's not hurting anybody. There hasn't been anybody to complain that I know of, other than Consular Cogliandro. And, you know, it's something that I still think it would keep our city neat and clean and respectable. So I'm asking that it stay on the books. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with Consular Novosowski, and I, I do agree that it keeps the city in terms of how it looks and for aesthetic purposes and things like that, I agree. However, considering that the Supreme Court found this unconstitutional in 2014, after we agreed that the city council put this ordinance in place, we almost have an obligation now to take it off our books, because it is unconstitutional, it cannot be enforced. And if someone were to complain, and we were to say, you're in violation of the ordinance, they could almost then have grounds to take action against us for trying to limit and restrain them on their constitutional right, First Amendment right, of freedom of expression and freedom of speech. And there's a reason why, that's the First Amendment, it's that important. That's why it's first. So although I agree with my colleague to an extent, unfortunately, the Supreme Court has spoken, and we have an obligation to abide by and repeal this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was one of the people that voted for this when it went in, and I was in favor of it back then. However, lots happened since then, mainly the Supreme Court, but along with that, this, this ordinance or sign legislation that we passed, we're now, it's a victim of its own success, because everybody is pretty well... You know, I don't put signs out too soon, I try not to, and I take them down right after the election. And we, we don't want unsightly signs up forever, but I, I think this, this sign ordinance has gone the way of, you know, it's, it's outdated now, especially with the, you know, the ruling of the Supreme Court. And I have to agree with my colleague that the First Amendment is the First Amendment for a reason. And so it, it's a lot cleaner to remove it now, and, but I, I do give credit to my colleague, Consular Novosowski, for putting this in back then. It did clean up a mess, and I don't think we're there anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Any other city councilors? Consular Cogliandro.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Through you to Consular Novosowski, just, just a question. You mentioned that this helps control something. Right now, the process, when people complain, normally, we don't hear it, it goes directly to the Election Department. They're the ones that have to answer the phone and explain to them that, yes, we have a rule on the books, but we don't enforce it because it's unconstitutional. So taking that rule off the books will eliminate a lot of phone calls during this time of the year for the Election Department, who's already dealing with enough as it is for the election. And how, how can we control anything with an ordinance that we're not enforcing because of the constitutionality of it? So I just, again, I wanted to just touch on that, but, I mean, I think this is a, a no-brainer, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Any other city councilors? This will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number nine, hearing called as ordered on a zoning ordinance establishing the Fennow Street Affordable Housing Overlay District.
Good evening, councilors. Tom Skarowski, 281 Broadway. I'm here tonight to speak with you all about a zoning overlay that we've proposed for Fennow Street, and I had some maps go around, I'm going to get the rest of the council here. And the maps are particularly important here, because it's called the Fennow Street Affordable Housing Overlay, and I think what you all see on the map is, that's not what all of us think of as Fennow Street. Although these parcels are titled Fennow Street, it's actually on the other side of Route One, sharing a border with the City of Chelsea, and adjacent to the Chelsea Housing Authority's properties. And so this site, about two acres in total, has been vacant for decades. And recently came to mind, as the Chelsea Housing Authority was undergoing a master planning process for their, their development, right in, in that section of town, and they actually, through that process, piqued the interest of the property owner who holds these two parcels, and we started a discussion about whether we could consider development that might complement the master planning process that's underway in Chelsea. So the, the proposal that you have is essentially for an overlay district that would only be applicable to affordable housing development. I think if I were to ask one amendment, and I know that's premature, but we can do it when it goes to zoning, it would be for projects with at least 25% affordability within them. And the goal here would to be promote, promoting multifamily development that's more in keeping with the neighborhood and then around it. As you all probably read in the letter that I submitted, we still are quite a bit behind in our affordability requirements per 40B, since the city council in February of last year approved, and then in June of last year, or of this year, rather, the state certified our housing production plan. We've actually been losing ground on affordability. So this could be a great opportunity to help build more affordability and to create the foundations for a good development that complements what's going on in Chelsea. One important note is, anything that we would approve, that the city council would approve, would be contingent on what the Chelsea Housing Authority is doing, because as, as you can probably see, looking at the parcels, all of the access, water, sewer, all of that would need to be closely coordinated with Chelsea and the Chelsea Housing Authority. Any development on these two parcels frankly couldn't occur without the cooperation from the City of Chelsea. So I think some of you may have heard of some potential development proposals here, but I would consider those not really worth, worthy of discussion today, because anything that we would approve, creating the framework for with this zoning ordinance, would then need to start a longer conversation with Chelsea in their master planning process for a development that would complement what's going on there. So I would say, in terms of an actual on-the-ground development, we're probably quite a ways away. But I certainly approve what we're doing tonight, which hopefully is setting the foundation for that cooperation with Chelsea and for an opportunity to expand our affordable housing stock in the city. And after we go through the pros and cons, happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any proponents? Proponents? Anyone here in favor? Hearing none. Any opponents? Anyone here against? City councilors? Consular Argenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been hearing about this project, and I've, and I've heard from the developer, and I'm fully in favor of it, certainly to increase our affordable housing stock, which Mr. Skarowski has just said that we're, we gave the state a plan and we're going backwards. So we really need to turn that around. And this project, being in Chelsea, it doesn't affect our roads, it doesn't affect traffic, it seems like it's a win-win for the city. I know it's a few years away, but I, I fully support it. You know, we, we really have to turn our attention to more affordable housing, and I think this is a great way of getting started. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Kelly?
Thank you. I just have some basic questions that I'd like to ask Tom, if you don't mind. Thank you for being here tonight. So first of all, this was originally going to be rezoned as an RC4, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What was the reasoning for then nixing that and, and changing it over to an overlay?
The reasoning behind it was, essentially, we, we had, had some discussions with a developer, who I believe had spoke with some of you all, about creating an affordable housing development here. And I think what we ultimately realized is, we wanted a zone that if that project ended up not working out, we didn't want to see a case where a market rate development came in and took its place, because the whole intent, and why we got so excited about this, was that it was a great opportunity to complement what the Chelsea Housing Authority is doing, and as Consular Argenzio had mentioned, an ability to help close the gap with our ten- And as Counselor Agenzio had mentioned, an ability to help close the gap with our 10%. So we wanted to make sure, essentially, this district is no different in most, if not all, respects from the RC4, except that there is an affordability requirement to opt into it. And then the underlying district does still apply if you're not opting in.
So this would, in your opinion, then, require more oversight, so to speak, than the RC4? Future oversight? So would a special permit be required for anything that goes here in this overlay district by the special, by the City Council?
It would, as it's proposed, it would be by right.
This is all by right?
Correct. But the oversight would be through the Site Plan Review Committee, and similar to the 40R district that was passed to comply with the State MBTA Communities Act, the difference here being, we didn't opt into the state policy, which is a little bit more cumbersome and difficult to manage. We figured we could create a simpler process on our own locally for just this one small parcel.
So in one of the first sections here, it does refer to all income levels. So would this be limited to just low income, you know, providing affordable housing? Or would this be available to, because it says right here, "Housing for persons of all income levels." So is that...
So it mentions within, and I'd have to get the citation exactly, but it would be applicable to any projects that include affordable housing. And it references 17.29, which is our smart growth district, the 40R districts that we have on Shirley Avenue and Green Street. But it only references what an affordable housing project means. I would want to specifically note, 25%. That's at least what I would say is a starting point. So then you have sort of a mixed income development. That includes a fair amount of affordability, but that would ultimately be on the council to determine what that number is.
But if there's no special permit and it can be built by right, when would that requirement come into play? That 25%?
It would be done through the Building Commissioner and the Site Plan Review Committee as they take in an application, understanding, does this meet the requirements of the overlay district? And the requirements would be whatever the council determines to set. Again, assuming we're setting some kind of baseline affordability requirement, if they don't receive an application that fulfills that baseline affordability requirement, they would determine, as the zoning determination officers, that this would not be eligible. So then, if you're wondering, how would we determine the affordability component, that would be a continuous monitoring that we would have to do to make sure that, just like any project that we have in the city where we're requiring 10% or 15% affordability, in the Lee Trailer Park example, we're going to have to monitor and ensure that they meet the requirements. And if they wouldn't, they'd be in violation of the zoning ordinance.
Right. I think my concern is the fact that if this was going to be done by special permit, then I think I would be more in line to see that that process would be followed through. Because at the special permit stage, we could, as a council, make sure what the affordability requirement was going to be, whether it be 25% or 80%. But with it being built by right, I don't know if I'm a little confused about that, to make sure it's enforceable and we decide on what we want it to be. Because I think in this project, we were originally talking that this was going to be two buildings, which I know now might be taking somewhat a while, but two buildings with almost 100% of those units being affordable. So then to turn around and say, "Well, it might only be 25% affordable." That's a big difference, a big difference between the two. And so does, would this overlay district then just include the two acres? Or would it be the entire 70 acres that it would include? What would we be talking about?
Good question. It would just be the acres, the two parcels in question, which is roughly two acres, give or take. And as to what the percentage of affordability is, even if we're not approving a project, per se, you could set that requirement as the council now in setting the ordinance. And then I think, yes, the Site Plan Review Committee would be responsible for actually monitoring and enforcing that. But I think we're the subject matter experts that I think we're pretty well-versed in how to do that and feel confident in our abilities.
And could we also put a, would there be any preference requirement for Revere residents?
You can always have up to 70% local preference.
Yeah. Okay. And considering that this is going to be an 02151 zip code, children here would be going to our schools, though, right? It may not be, I understand the egresses are going to be in Chelsea, but this would impact our school system, right? They would be Revere residents.
I would assume so.
Okay. And then the water and sewer, that would be also burden on Chelsea. Is there going to be some type of an impact fee that we'll have to pay to Chelsea to absorb that?
We would anticipate there being some form through this development of an intermunicipal agreement that we would have to sign that would, that would cover those costs.
Okay.
And reflect that collaboration between the two communities.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I find this particular parcel attractive because it's pretty much in Chelsea, and it's not going to affect our traffic. It's not going to affect our infrastructure. However, it is obviously going to affect our school system. So that's the, how can I put this kindly? That's the negative part of this project. But as far as creating the district and putting the restrictions on it, I'm in favor of it for this parcel. I'm not sure I would find a lot of other parcels in the city that I could support. In fact, probably zero. But I think it, I think it's a, it's a good start. And it's definitely, I've never been frightened by the, that we're under 10% affordable. I think we've gone over this discussion quite a bit. And I've been threatened with that for 25 years. Nobody's ever taken me up on a threat. So I think I'm on the right side of that issue. But this is one that I can support, and I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliano?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're creating the zoning for this project, correct?
We're creating the zoning for a potential project, which might be the one that you have heard of. But realistically, considering this is going to need coordination with the City of Chelsea and the Chelsea Housing Authority, it could look like something different. So I wouldn't overly focus on one particular project concept.
Well, it would seem like one goes with the other. So if we approve this, they're going to build or begin the process of wanting to build. So in, to Counselor Kelly's point, we don't have any oversight. The council doesn't after this point. It would go to site plans. So, you know, we have concerns from residents. The schooling was one of them. Although, I understand the issue with schooling. I just, if, do we want affordable housing? Because that's going to bring families. So we have to assume, if we get affordable housing anywhere, that we're going to get children that are going to go into the school system. And that we had previously discussed, maybe if there was, you know, if this does go through, that those kids might have a chance to go to Chelsea. I don't know anything about that. So I'm hoping we can get an answer on that. The other question I had was about public safety. If there is a facility or an apartment building built over there, is Revere going to have to go around to get, you know, a fire apparatus, say, through Chelsea to the building? Same with police. You know, I know we have great relationships with the other cities, but I'd like to know what the plan is for that. If we do allow, if we're going to build this district, we're assuming, or if we're going to approve this district, we're assuming something is going to be built there. So I want to make sure that we, you know, have all the information. This, this project, it was said it was going to be 100% affordable. Right? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, and how close would that, if not over the 10%, how close to that 10% does that get us to?
So we're about 700 units short, give or take, in our housing production plan in year one. In order, this time in June 2026, to continue to be in good standing with the state, we'll have had to produce 122 units of affordable housing between now and June of '26. So it helps us get there, but we're about 1/7 to where we need to be.
So that, I mean, and I agree with Counselor Zambudo, 40B's been used nothing but a bargaining chip for the last 25 years, according to you. So, but I would like to get close enough to that number. This property may as well be in Chelsea. And, you know, again, it's not a strain on our public works, not a strain to utilities. My concerns were schooling and the traffic that comes with it. Not the fact that we're going to have kids brought to the city. I'm all for that. But the traffic that that's going to bring, having to go through Chelsea to get back to Revere. So that's one issue I have. And the other one is the public safety aspect. But other than that, this is kind of a no-brainer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just curious, this building, is it going to cast a shadow on the Northeast Expressway?
So that's, I think, something that we would need to work with the project team to work through once we actually get on a project-based review. We, again, I think it's a bit premature to look at that particular design, because we don't know if Chelsea might say, "You need to change the design in conformance with what the housing authority's doing." But shadow studies and things like that would be the types of things we would need to look at, and, you know, certainly in partnership with the state and MassDOT.
Because I would hate to see something like, you know, a shadow cast on that expressway at 3:00 in the afternoon, or 2:00 in the afternoon. So I just, and it's so close to the expressway. So that's, I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I had a question. To cut into the school aspect of it with the affordable housing, and to cut into the overcrowding of the classrooms, I know a few kindergarten classrooms have more than 20 kids in their respective classes this year, and that's far too many for, any kindergarten teacher will tell you, that's far too many. But to cut into that aspect of it with the, with the school population, would the affordable housing aspect ever come from a point of, say, senior affordable or veteran, senior veteran affordable? Could we limit, could, not limit, but could we pinpoint the type of affordable housing that goes into these units?
I don't believe that's something that you would want to achieve through zoning. I think that could run afoul of some fair housing issues. Because of that exact reason, I think a lot of communities do try to create tools to keep families and schools from being overburdened. But...
And if we couldn't do that, could we say, if it's 25%, maybe do 10% senior, you know, 10% senior veteran, or, not, not to that extent, but, you know, separate it, divide it up three ways, between regular affordable, senior affordable, and senior veteran affordable? Is there anything we could do with that to mix that up?
I think I could take that into consideration and have more information for you at the zoning subcommittee, if that works.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Swaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, when I had a meeting with the developers, we were discussing the schools. And that was like my number-one concern on where we were going to put the children in our school system. But they, our conversation ended up being that they would give preference to existing Revere families that already live in Revere that are looking for low-income housing, that are already in our school system. And I want to make sure that that, what they said to me is actually what they are going to do. And as far as what the percentage was, I did not hear that it was 100% from their mouth. So I heard it was about, I think they said 70/30, and they were going to give Revere preference.
The 70% is probably the local preference option. So that's just, in any affordable housing development, you can give up to 70% of the units as a preference to people that are applying locally. You always need to set aside 30% from people that don't reflect that local preference need. I don't know what their final percentage was. I think it was closer to 100. But they, they said of that 100 units, 70% of them could be local preference, to your point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hermio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Tom. Tom, thank you for bringing this up. I guess I have a couple of questions. Well, first, I want to reject some premises made about, you know, whether affordability brings new families in and burdens, I mean, we have people in the city of Revere, for a two-family home, a two-person home, that fit affordability at $118,000, which is a lot of money, but also not a lot of money, especially the housing costs that we have here. So whether it's a parent with a kid or two adults, you know, the premise that affordability somehow burdens our schools innately, I think that's just a flawed premise. Because we have people who live in this city, who make that money and can't afford to stay in this city, and they don't have kids. It might just be a couple. And so I just want to reject that. And I say that because, you know, right after this, I think we're talking about waste left. And there are workers in this city who work at sites in the city and around the city, in the greater Boston region, who can't afford to live in the greater Boston region. And so, you know, I think it's so important that we are betting on a site that brings as much affordability as possible, which, you know, I guess some questions around this, right? And I'll link this to the conversation around the waste left piece that we're talking about next, is that we need to ensure that whatever goes on this side, and in addition to maybe some of the concerns that have been brought up here by, by my fellow counselors, I think it'd be important that if we're going to rezone this, after we, you know, that it's important that, for the workforce component, we are ensuring that whoever's doing the work there is paying a prevailing wage, et cetera, et cetera. Because we have people, again, in this city who can't afford a lot of things. And I guess that's my two cents on that. And would like to maybe potentially work with your office on, on that component. If we're going to just actually do away with, I know we had talked a little bit about the project. You've mentioned it a few times. We all heard about it individually. Would love to work with you on that. And although 25% is not, not ideal, I mean, I know that is getting kicked around, you know, I'd like to be able to see this through. But I think if you could address some of the concerns, either individually or to the council today, that'd be helpful. That's just my, I guess, my initial analysis here. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agenzio?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. So one of the points that Counselor Kelly brought up, when we go to zoning, we're going to set the parameters for this overlay district. So why don't we just set it at 80% affordable? And I know you just suggested 25%. But if we want this to be affordable, just set that parameter. And if it's by right, it'll be by right that you have to provide 80% at least. And the second thing, we're a city of blue-collar workers that want to raise families. We seem like we're leery about kids a lot of times. From what I hear, the enrollment in our school system is going down. So I wouldn't want to be afraid of kids getting affordable housing. I think we're blue-collar. We're always saying that families are being pushed out of the, out of the city. I think affordable housing with families and kids in mind is where we want to go and, and set the parameter to where we want it. And if a project comes along and they fit that parameter by right, as long as you're giving us 80% affordable, maybe not 100, I think that's, we'll do that in zoning, and it'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, very much. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you for the leeway. So I guess that's the, that's where I'm stuck and where my concern comes from, what Counselor Agenzio just discussed as well. I just don't understand why, why aren't we just taking this per project and issuing a special permit and then putting the parameters in on that special permit? Why do the overlay and put, because the only way I could really support something like this is if those parameters are in place and we do have 80% affordable housing. And the 70%, and I think that's where we get around any concern about the school system and extra burden on the school system, which I don't know whether or not would be created. But if we did put another requirement about preference to Revere residents, those families are already living in Revere. So it's not like it's going to be an added burden that they're going to be coming in from outside the city. So I would feel more comfortable issuing a special permit for a special, you know, for an individual product, project than doing it this way. But if we can get the parameters in place, then that would be all right.
Attorney Jerry D'Ambrosio. I believe I, early on, we had discussed, by the way, I represent a potential developer of this parcel, this one acre. of, of this parcel, this one acre, slightly larger than one acre parcel. I think what's happened really over the last couple of weeks that I can inform the council about is that, in looking at this project, Chelsea in specific has said, "Well, hold on one second. This really is a Chelsea project," right? It's, it's kind of like the, the tail on the dog, because the city of Chelsea is planning a massive redevelopment of this housing area in Prattville. They put the project out to bid, my understanding is the Cochrane Group was successful in that RFP, and they're currently early on in their plans, but it's going to add hundreds of units to this Chelsea area. I believe what the developer of this small lot had suggested, it would be between 50 and 100. Again, it's, it's the tail on the dog, and, and I put forward that analogy because the city of Chelsea wants to make sure that this smaller parcel is well-integrated into the larger overall parcel. And, and while I suspect that whatever's built here is probably going to be a significant majority affordable, 75, 70, 80, whatever those ultimate numbers are, are going to be achieved through a harmonization, if you will, with what Chelsea is building. And, and that goes to every other issue here. The likelihood is that they're going to be using tie-ins to Chelsea DPW, Chelsea Resources, Chelsea DPW, Chelsea Water, Chelsea Emergency. Look, the geography of this spot is undeniable. Right now, if you wanted to access this land legally, you'd have to fly over it and parachute in, because there is no access through the city of Revere. There is no access really through public areas in Chelsea. There, there is no frontage on this parcel. It's totally landlocked in by other, other property owners in the city of Chelsea. So, the only way this works is with the city of Chelsea allowing it, allowing whatever variance and access way that are going to be needed, the tie-ins, the school usage. So, rather than looking at it as one single project, I suggest that the better way of looking at it is a larger project with hundreds of units that we're going to have to harmonize with Chelsea. And while, candidly, Chelsea's going to be bearing the brunt of some of these issues, and the city of Revere is going to be getting the benefits in terms of a 40B set off, there's going to be, there's going to need to be some harmony between the two cities and some of these issues. And so, I think, I do think that control, I think site plan control is important, you can adjust the number and say whether it's 80 or 70 or 60, that can be important. I think the AMIs are going to be important, but I think allowing some flexibility so that it can kind of mesh into the, the Chelsea project is going to be important. You don't want to have kids living across the street from each other having different rules, right? It'd kind of make no sense if you have one building on one side of the street that's in Chelsea, allowing for a certain kind of housing or AMI, and then having the building that's right across the street having different set of rules. And I get it, that elbow is technically Revere, but let's be frank, it's really Chelsea, right? They're, they're going to be living and, and having resources, using the resources of the city of Chelsea. And it wouldn't surprise me one bit if any agreement that's worked out with Chelsea also involves the local schools in Chelsea having those kids.
But there may also be an impact fee that we'll have to pay for Chelsea, so, even though, so what I, I guess what I want to say is, I want to make sure that the city of Revere is getting a good benefit from this. 25% affordable housing and then paying an impact fee to Chelsea because of the water and sewer and other things that may, they may be responsible for, I don't know if that's a good enough benefit for, for the city. I want to make sure that the benefit to the city is a good one, and I think we're only going to get that if we get a 70, 80, or 90% affordable housing units in there, in addition to then being offset to paying the impact fee. That has to be a high percentage in order for it to go towards our 40B. That's a big benefit for us. When we're talking 25% and then possibly still an impact fee being paid to Chelsea, I don't see the, the benefit to Revere.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure that they're asking for an impact fee. I, I do know that the property tax for the city of Revere is going to go up and go through the roof, right?
But if it's their water and sewer, and, I mean, I don't, I, how...
Well, but at the end of the day, I mean, those are all going to be subject to those agreements, and by the way, I believe the city council needs to approve those agreements. Ultimately, those inner-community contracts aren't worked out by private developers. They're all going to have to be approved by this city council. Remember, this is just, again, the point is, this is just a shell that's going to allow it to happen. You're going to have to have quite a few votes coming down the road on all of those agreements with the city of Chelsea, and traditionally, it's the city council. I think the city council is the only authority that has the right to do that. So, you're going to be voting on those agreements as they're presented over the next three to five years. And I think the reason we're not here with definitive plans is that Chelsea's just not there yet. Chelsea's in the initial phases of developing this, and so they're not quite sure yet what that harmony is going to be. So, in voting for it, you're just leaving the door open.
Point of honor. Point of honor?
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is going to zoning, we're going to discuss all these details. We can go on all night here, but we're not going to get anywhere. We're going to work this out in zoning, so I would appreciate if we move on. Thank you.
I'm going to allow, I'm going to allow the few counselors to ask their two more questions, and I got to go on myself, and then we'll move on, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, when we were talking about affordable housing, someone had brought up overcrowded classrooms. I added to it. I have two children, my son is six and our daughter is four. I've always been for young families in Revere, I've always been for keeping young families in Revere. I've always been for, for helping senior citizens through my, my work the last five years, but senior housing's a big issue, and senior affordable housing is a big, big issue. Allowing seniors to stay in their places of residence is a huge issue. Keeping people in Revere is a huge issue. I see it all the time with my friends that move up north, they move out west, young families, newlyweds, couples that just moved in together, they can't afford an apartment here, they're moving elsewhere. But for once, for the, for someone to say that, there were a couple of comments that families, the counselor did not care about families, is ridiculous.
No one said that.
Well, someone added, someone said he was talking about families, but I was looking at the point of splitting up the affordable housing into senior housing, regular affordable, and veteran, and senior veteran. But to, to put that out there, that a counselor doesn't care about young families is just, is just outright ludicrous, but I'd just like to put that on record.
Probably no one said that. Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. And so, I, I did meet with a, a potential developer, and, and I am all for this, and I got to be honest, 25% is not enough. As Counselor Kelly said, I think we need to, we need to put it up there at 70. From the conversation we had with a, a potential developer, there were a lot of, all levels of BMI, 30, 60, 80, so it could go across the board. You're going to get families, you're going to get affordable, you're going to get seniors, and this is something that we as city counselors have been screaming from the rooftops every election season. It's affordability, it's affordability, it's affordability, and then we come up here and we block every chance at affordability that comes before us. We can't do it, we need to support the city, we need to support our residents with affordability, and that project needs to come up a lot higher than 25% to gain my support. So, that's all I have, and this will be referred to zoning.
Hearing called disordered on a loan order for McMac and Field in the amount of $4.2 million.
Chris Chiamella, Supercenter Public Works, 319 Charter Street. So, this loan order will help the DPW finish off McMac and Field. The DPW has put a lot of time and effort into this property, and I'd love to see this come through to fruition. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any proponents? Mr. Viskey?
Good evening, Counsel. Richard Viskey, 21 Broadway, City CFO. I am here in support of the loan order presented to you. This 4.2 million is the last step that we need to have authorized so that we can execute the contract. This is a, a project that's already been out to bid, we actually have the set numbers, so this is not an estimate, this is based upon actual needs, and again, we're just waiting for this bond authorization to, to get rolling on completion of the park. So, happy to answer any questions on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Name and address, proponent?
James McCario, 193 Crescent Ave, Ward 1. It's a long time coming for this project. I think the council and the residents and the children are really excited about this project to get completed. I played there many years ago, and we're all looking forward to closing this project out. I just have one question for Mr. Viskey. The loan order is for 4.2 million? And what's that, is that a 10- or 15-year bond? Just to let the taxpayers know what this is going to be costing us.
If I may, Mr. President, I'm happy to answer Mr. McCario's question here. What we would have is a 15-year bond for $4.2 million, and annual debt service payment would be in the average around $372,000 a year for this loan order. Just to let everyone know, this, this is only partial. We, a couple, about six years, six months ago, 12 months ago, we've reallocated some other money that got the preliminary work done, so this is the, the actual construction of the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Appreciate it, and looking forward to getting this done.
Thank you, Jim. Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Closing that side, opponents? Anyone here in opposition? Closing that side, city counselors? Counselor Call Leandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's not a question, I'm just, can, would you, would you guys be able to send us a copy of the plans so we know what it's, what it's going to look like?
Yes, I can forward those to all the counselors.
That's it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Genzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chiamella, I have the same question. Has a set of plans been drawn up and shown to the city council? Who's, who designed it? Is, and what are the facilities? Is there a clubhouse? Is there a concession stand? Is there bleachers? What kind of a field is it going to be?
So, the design was completed by Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
It was done in tandem with the DPW Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And we had some, a couple inputs from some of the counselors. It's a turf field, there is a small building on the site for a bathroom, and there's also a press box, but as far as the facilities go on the field, it's mostly a field. There's two sets of stands on the left side for 60 people, and I believe one set on the right side for 30 people.
Okay, I, I would have been more comfortable if we saw a set of plans as, as to what the 4.2 million dollars was going, is, is it irrigation system? Is it natural turf?
No, it's, it's a very large project, there's a lot of improvements to Winter Bath itself.
Right.
A larger tanning wall providing off-street parking.
Okay.
I believe it's 27 spots in front of the field. There's raised crosswalks along Winter Bath. I mean, there's a whole netting system to protect the surrounding of Butters. I'd be happy to send you the plans along, just so you guys can look over them, but...
Okay, is it natural turf, or...
No, it is an artificial turf.
Artificial turf?
Correct.
Light, a full set of lights?
Yes, full set of lights, speaker system, there's all, we went all through it. Beautiful scoreboard.
All right, if, if you could send me those plans, I would appreciate it.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thank you for all your work with this, and thank you to everyone involved. I know this is a huge, huge location for our city. It was for many years, like Mr. McCario said, there was always St. Mary's and McMac, and so anytime you talk about adding a space like that, an outside space for, for kids to play, whether it's football, flag football, baseball, soccer, anything like that, is huge. I had a few residents before the work started reach out from the apartment building behinds, and they were concerned about drainage with the work going on and things like that. Any, have there been any, how's the relationship with the, the people in that building?
We've been trying to work out the drainage between that building for a little while now. We've been in touch with the engineers, but, I mean, they're floating back designs back and forth. Currently, it's all dumping into the field, which we're trying to alleviate, but we'll see where that goes.
And are we looking at a summer for it being ready? Next summer, you think, or next fall?
Late, late summer.
Late summer?
Yeah.
Awesome.
But yeah, that's our timeline.
Great. Then maybe one day we can talk about throwing a dome on top of that?
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give kudos to Logistic Link. They gave $500,000 to the city in CIT money in Ward 1, and they're going to give another $500,000 once their facility is finished, and that's going to McMac and Field, so I just wanted to give them kudos. They're giving a million dollars, which is going into the McMac and Field, which is CIT money from Ward 1, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're all excited about McMac and Field coming back to life, with, it was Little Fenway Park when I first came to the city. What I'd like to know is, we're bonding 4.2 million right now, does somebody have a total cost of what the whole project is going to cost in the end? So, that's probably more for the CFO than for you, but...
This is the last piece of the puzzle, so to say. The, the authorization's already complete for the buildings, this is phase two, buildings are phase three because they're two separate projects, but this will cap it off.
Thank you. Mr. CFO.
Thank you. How are you? Good evening. I'm doing well, thank you. Like I said earlier, I don't know if it was this fiscal year or last fiscal year, we repurposed $2.3 million worth of former bond authorizations and borrowings. That $2.3 million got it to where it is today, with all the kind of underground work and the level of the field and the soils, and this 4.2 million combined with that $2.3 million should be the total cost of the project.
So, we're looking at about $6.5 million total cost.
Exactly.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hermio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Chris, nice to see you, thank you for coming. I just have a question about the water retention. That neighborhood, I live on Low Street, which is a stone's throw, oh, stone's throw away from that neighborhood, it's called Low Street because it's a low, it's a low neighborhood, that whole Low Street neighborhood which runs up to Winter Bath there, and less so on the side of where McMac is, admittedly, but, and we haven't seen too much flooding, but it is one of the lowest-lying neighborhoods in the city, and so we, we know what's happening at Suffolk Downs, where they're building, they're building like an amphitheater that would actually pool, is actually going to pool water at some point, should there be a, you know, 100-year storm or something like that. And they're building a lot of permeable surfaces, particularly biopermeable surfaces in that, in that development in Suffolk Downs. This seems like a really good opportunity. One of the, one of the unintended good side effect of having that become essentially a marsh over the last 10 years is that a lot of water was actually pooling there and preventing from going into people's basements and people's foundations. So, I, can you speak a little bit? It sounds like you've been into the details of the project with the architects potentially or the engineers. Can you speak a little bit about that? Is this going to provide additional water retention support for that neighborhood and protect people's properties?
So, not specifically for that neighborhood, but the system itself. As you said, it was very wet down there previously.
Yeah.
This was, field had to be raised five, I'm sorry, eight feet total from the existing level.
So, about your height?
Yeah. So, we, after that was, well, in tandem with raising the field, we also installed a 100-year storm, storm scepter system, so there's a big Coltech system underneath that field that can sport a storm, 1,000 year, I'm sorry, 100-year storm. As far as the neighborhood, though, there is a project currently ready to build, bid for...
as the neighborhood, though, there is a project currently ready to build, bid for library, low drainage project to fix and improve that whole drainage area.
That's awesome. But we can foresee, I guess, because of the type of surfaces that there, it'll be permeable on the AstroTurf there. And then it's dirt, I imagine dirt fill in the bottom. There'll be quite a bit of water retention there. Without, I don't know if you know, maybe you can ask this question, figure this question out for us. I mentioned the amphitheater in Suffolk Downs, which, if I remember from the plans, it's been a while ago. That's gonna, that particular piece of infrastructure will allow for flooding in case of a really bad storm, and the water will actually raise there if there's a really bad storm. Is that something that we can, like, we can reasonably do for McMackin in the event of a really bad storm so that the water is being funneled there instead of going into the streets or the basements or anything like that? Or is it too late, I guess, maybe? And also, you might not have the answer to this question.
So the field itself is sized appropriately for 100-year storm for what falls in the field itself, in and around the field. As far as that neighborhood, we already had a flooding issue there. I'd hate to divert more water towards that field. But we are, like I said, there is a storm design, I'm sorry, a drainage design prepped and ready to go. We just bid Asti Ave. This is the next one to go is for that neighborhood to upsize and correct those flooding issues.
Great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other city councilors? Counselor Argenzio.
Mr. President, I'd like to maybe table this and have Weston and Sampson come up here and present some renderings and exactly, so we can physically see what we're bonding the 4.2 million. I'm fully in favor of the project, and I'd love to see this come to fruition. But I don't think there's ever been a presentation in front of the council with rendering, unless, I'm totally losing it here. I don't know, I don't remember that that's, a project of this nature is usually a formal presentation in front of the council and we can, with a, have they designed it? So I don't mean to delay this any further, but if maybe in October Weston and Sampson can come up and give us a presentation, I'd love to see what we're spending the money on. Yeah?
As far as presentation, I'm glad to do it. I just...
Well, just some renderings. Usually you have big...
Yeah, we did have renderings. Oh, I'm sorry. We did not present the renderings to the council itself, but there were some along Winter Bath itself in front of the field.
Okay.
This may delay the opening of the field, but if this is what the city council wants...
I mean, a week or two? Can Weston and Sampson come in October?
Yeah, I'm sure they'd be happy to.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to table this until Weston and Sampson can make a presentation for us.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I would like to just appoint...
Yeah, please.
On the roll call to table the loan order for McMackin Field, Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna. I'm sorry?
No.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Oh, no.
Counselor Novoselfs, I mean, Counselor Zambudo voting no, and Council President Silvestri.
No.
No, the matter will be tabled. Calendar item number 11. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending wage theft policies in the city of Revere.
Do we have any proponents? Anyone here in favor?
Sorry. My name is Josh Cologne. I'm a business rep with Carpenters Union. And I'd like to say that wage theft affects all of us. It negatively impacts the community, and these practices amount to tax and insurance fraud. It not only affects the employees, it affects all of us. I'd like to speak in favor of amending the tax ordinance, I'm sorry, the wage ordinance further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Claudia Correa, 15 Corys Street. I'm here to speak in support of this ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Anyone else here in favor? Any opponents? Anyone here against? City councilors?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the council, I'd like to say just that this is such an important update to our ordinance, which is a little outdated, as Mr. Josh Cole, is that right? Cole, yeah. Colon or...?
Colon.
Colon, okay. Josh Cologne mentioned the wage theft happens a lot and does lead to tax and insurance fraud. But most importantly, what's happening around the country, but certainly here in Revere and in Massachusetts, is that developers are building cheaper and cheaper products and projects. And in addition to that, they're saving, or I would like to say, stealing 30% in the profit that the workers have earned by paying them on average 30% less than if they did a job that had something like a prevailing wage. Naturally, folks, with that 30% comes some additional, what I like to think, intended consequences, which is contractors who are engaging in wage theft are also curtailing and paying less into workers' compensation, into state and federal taxes, into unemployment insurance, which many of the workers also need. Additionally, for some of our most vulnerable workers, some of our most vulnerable workers, contractors who engage in wage theft are taking advantage of their ability to work or inability to work here and paying them less and holding workers under the gun when they are in most need. I think that we can all agree that, we've talked a lot about the nature of our working-class city, and I think we can all agree that this is not a practice that we should be engaging in or allowing any of one, any person or any contractor that we work with or that is doing business in our city to engage. And that's why I proposed this ordinance. I commend the, I see some construction workers here, some members of the Carpenters Union here, and I commend you all because it's 7:37 on a Monday night, and you're probably just worked a long day, and you, this is the last place where you'd want to be. So I really appreciate that you're here to say, you know, to show your face and be in support of something that will benefit your family. Because essentially, with contractors that practice, do this practice, what they're doing is they're taking bread off of people's tables. And they're exacerbating some of the issues that we're facing here, like displacement and unaffordability, because they're just not paying hard-working people the right amount of money, the amount of money that they deserve. So I urge my colleagues to join me in passing this ordinance when it comes up next on the council. And thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Again, thanks again for the work that are here. Thank you, Mr. Cologne, for showing up today.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councilors? Hearing none? Okay. This will refer to Legislative Affairs.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Can I ask suspension of rules? We have a department head here to discuss an issue and like to, under our rules, we take up department heads first. Item 35, if you would, please.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if we can spend the rule, take up item number 35, please. Counsel on the suspension of rules? All in favor, all opposed? 35.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Councilors Kelly and Cogliandro that the mayor request the election department to reinstate the Lincoln School as a polling location beginning with the 2027 elections.
Chief, that's not elections. Noise ordinance. Not the sheet that I have. So noise ordinance motion.
Yeah. Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor request the chief of police to purchase decibel meters for all police cruisers for the purpose of enforcing the noise ordinance.
Maria Levita, chief of police. Thank you to the council for pushing this forward. So yes, I've had some conversations with Counselor Novoselfsky. We obviously have our quality-of-life issue going on, so anything we can do to better enforce that, I'm in favor of. We're at the research, we're researching the right devices at this point, see cost, how many we need, things like that. So we'll be moving forward on that.
Thank you, Chief. City councilor? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief, for being here. So you know, we're trying to switch this over to 40 you had passed today. How many, do you have a roundabout number of how many cruisers this is going to go into and what it's going to cost per to put this in?
No, there's a vast array of the devices, so we want to make sure we have the right ones so we're able to properly assess and document what it is. So right now, depending on price will be kind of how many we deploy. So we need to look at if it's something that maybe just should go in the supervisor's cars to start and see how often they're deployed and utilized, and then maybe go from there. If we're seeing a really good positive result with it, we can always turn around and outfit more cruisers as we go along.
And is this something that is budgeted for already? Do you have, do you have the money for this?
I don't anticipate it being a huge expenditure. Like I said, we have done a little bit of research, but I don't think it's anything that...
Would you say it's going to be...
...is going to bust the budget.
It's going to be over $15,000?
I don't anticipate being over $15,000 now.
We don't have to send this to Ways and Means then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
That changes, I'll let you know. I don't think so, though.
Any other councilors?
Mr. President, I just want to thank the chief and you for bringing this up and the council for allowing us to move forward. The chief has been here for a while, and we want to make sure we hear from the right people and make the right choices in what we want to do here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Back to the regular order business.
Public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Okay. Residents, business owners of Revere, if you have anything to speak on the agenda, please come up. You have two minutes. Please give your name, address, and the motion you'll be speaking on. Anybody? Okay. It's closed.
Unfinished business, calendar item number 12, an ordinance further amending Chapter 12.20 polls, wires, and cables of the Revere revised ordinances.
Any city councilors?
Mr. President, I think there was a hold on this because it was tabled in the third reading the last time. So, you know, I'm against it. You know, I still don't feel that the engineering department is the right place to put something like this. You know, I like to see that we have control of the problems here in the council. I know they usually blow wind to us when they come up, but I think we ought to have direct access to them, not through another third party here in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I echo exactly what Counselor Novoselfsky said. I agree that this should stay with the council so that we have some control and we can have some dialogue with the residents and with National Grid. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was my motion. I see this as bogging down the city council process. To have National Grid come up here and talk at length about where a phone poll is going to go, I think the city council is better served with other things. This, I think, is appropriate to have the city engineer. We've had discussions about the city engineer notifying ward councilors when they are approached by National Grid so the ward counselor can do their due diligence and look at the location and see if there's any problems with the neighborhood. I just see it as a burden here on us to, just to decide on where a phone poll is going to go. So that was my reason for the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague from Ward 4. I think, I think it's time to move on from the battles over the telephone polls, et cetera, that we've gone through for many years up here. I've been trying, I've been hoping for something like this. We did as best we could with what we had. We put together a list. We did a lot of good over the years, but I think it is, in fact, time for the engineer to do that. And I agree that, you know, especially the ward councilors should be in touch with the engineer on projects that are going to go forward. But I have to agree with Counselor Argenzio on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I tend to agree on poll locations when they're putting in a new poll, but when we have National Grid up here, it's more about the double polls. And I don't want to lose control of that, and I don't want to give that to the city engineer, that we have double polls. We probably have 115, 120 double polls in this city, and it's very slow to get them down. We passed ordinances here several years back that make, you know, tells National Grid that they have to have a poll removed within six months. I have polls in my neighborhood that have been there for 10 years. Totally unacceptable. And I still want National Grid to come here, to come to us, not through the city engineer.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
I believe in, I made it clear that nothing precludes us from having National Grid come up here to discuss double polls, hanging wires, anything like that. And maybe we should do that on a quarterly basis. The people that come up here before us, when we start questioning them about double polls, hanging wires, they basically just shrug their shoulders and say they don't have anything to do with that, and we vent, and nothing really comes to fruition. So maybe quarterly, we have National Grid come up here, and we have our lists of double polls and things that are irritating us. And, you know, I think that's prudent. So thank you. Roll call.
Thank you, Counselor. And Madam Clerk, if we can roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending Chapter 12.20 polls, wires, and cables of the Revere revised ordinances? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number 13, revocation of Chapter 148, License Number 651, 22 Naples Road, granted January 24, 22 for cause.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see the property owner and the attorney, if you guys wouldn't mind just stepping up to the microphone. I did receive communication from the building commissioner today. They did, Louis Carbonaro did another inspection. I thank him for that. There was a small issue with the type of planters, not an issue, but it was kind of a gray area. So it was kind of a decision we all made together that we're fine with the planters that are out front. There was no vehicles parked in the fire lane. And I just, the only thing, and I have every intention and I will be tabling, excuse me, placing this on... every intention and I will be tabling, excuse me, placing this on file tonight, I want this to be over with. I just want everyone to leave with understanding two things. Number one, I want to ensure that we all understand that twenty feet on the left, twenty feet on the right of the property, and twenty feet in the rear is, in fact, a fire lane. Do we all understand that? Yes, we understand that. Thank you. Okay, and so, thank you for that. And the second thing is, do we all understand that violating that special permit condition could find you right back here for another revocation hearing for cause? Mr. President, again to Councilor Cogliandro. Yes, we do understand that any alleged violation could subject us to a hearing, but in the future, we would appreciate due notice and opportunity to be heard. And I do, Mr. President, if I may take the liberty to thank Councilor Cogliandro, the ISD, and the Fire Department, because it was like herding cats, not due to any fault on either side, it's just the schedules just happened to collide, and it was a long time coming, but everyone on the city side acted perfectly professionally. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Council Jose.
If, unless anyone has anything they'd like to add, I would like to place this on file and be done.
Thank you, council. Madam Clerk, we could place on file? Thank you, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council.
Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had eight appointments and reappointments at the Appointment Subcommittee. We had two in attendance, and I spoke with Chief Cullen and Chief Levita, and I would like to vote these four appointments out tonight favorably, Michael Tucker and Laurie Manzo.
Thank you, councilor. Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call.
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Council Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Council Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Council Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Harameo.
Yes.
Yes, Council Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed.
Thank you.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Committee Report.
Council Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had one item before us, and it was a motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro to move the noise ordinance violations to forty U. It was looked upon favorably by the committee, and I'd like to call for a roll call to look on it favorably.
Thank you, councilor. Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council approve an act permitting the city of Revere to establish penalties and liens for noise ordinance violations? Council Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Council Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Council Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Harameo.
President.
Voting present, Council Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved. Communications, calendar item number twenty-three, communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval of the November 4th, 2025, municipal election warrant.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-four, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Cable Receipt Reserve Fund to pay Revere TV's quarterly invoice.
Ms. Tavisky.
Good evening. Richard Tavisky, 21 Broadway, City CFO. This is a quarterly appropriation that you see pretty much every quarter, just the transfer of the cable TV money to the appropriated account so we can pay the vendor. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Madam Clerk, if we can roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund in the amount of ninety-one thousand, four hundred, thirty-seven dollars and nineteen cents for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Council Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Council Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Council Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Harameo.
Yes.
Yes, Council Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number twenty-five, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the ETP account for upgrades to Agenda and Minutes Management for all public boards and commissions.
Good evening. Richard Tavisky, City CFO. This appropriation was approved by the committee that manages those ETP funds, and because those funds are required to be appropriated by this body, it is before you, and I recommend favorable action on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tavisky. Do we have any city councilors? Madam Clerk.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the ETP fund in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred, fifty-two dollars and five cents for Legistar Agenda and Minutes Software? Council Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Council Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Council Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Harameo.
Yes.
Yes, Council Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number twenty-six, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the replacement of park benches and other improvements to Kimberly Park in Beauchamp.
Ms. Tavisky.
Good evening. Richard Tavisky, 21 Broadway, City CFO. The appropriation speaks for itself. Working with Council McKenna and the mayor's office, we are in favor of this appropriation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, councilor. Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been having a great issue down in Beauchamp with homeless and people that are gathering there daily, and so we had to take out the benches because they were sleeping there overnight, and a lot of them had, were partially clothed. They were drinking, and they were urinating and going to the bathroom in the bushes, so we had to take out the benches. So, what this is for is to get benches that have, they have, in the middle, they have, yes, so people can't sleep on the benches. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Madam Clerk.
Sorry, Mr. President, before the vote.
Council Harameo.
I just want to point a clarification. If I understood right, we are updating the benches so that unhoused people cannot sleep on them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're updating the benches, Council McKenna, so unhoused people can sleep on them? Okay.
Council Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just want to be clear, they remove the benches and they're updating the benches?
Yes, so, under Chief Levita's guidance, she suggested that we remove the benches because we were having a daily problem down there, and if you notice where the park is, six hundred feet or eight hundred feet is the Beauchamp School, and the kids were going through this, they cut through this park. So, under her guidance, she said to remove the benches and to buy new benches that have that arm in the middle so people wouldn't sleep there. So, that's what we did.
Thank you. That's, I was gonna, I was about to ask how they updated the, if they put any kind of bench back.
No, they haven't put the benches back. The five thousand dollars is to get new benches that have middle arm in the, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, it would make the park safer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I just, I'd like, I don't know if she's still here, it doesn't look like she is, but I'd like to have a conversation, maybe with Chief Levita on this. I'd just like to know what the alleged crime that these homeless folks are charged with to, to prompt the removal of the benches. I'd also like to know.
Point of affirmation, Mr. President.
State your point, councilor.
First of all, they're drinking in the park, so they have open containers of alcohol. They're not, they're partially clothed. They're, they're pooping and peeing in the park, so, I mean, I just, and the kids are coming through, so it's a safety concern.
Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, I still have the floor. And the other thing is that, the other thing is that I talked to the chief, the chief talked to Chris Charamella, and they both decided that this was the best thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Council Harameo.
Mr. President, thank you for yielding back to me. I wasn't done asking my question, for the record, Mr. President, so I really, anyway, you're the president, so you'll do what you want.
Once, once a councilor asks to state a point, they get to state their point, councilor.
So, the crux of my question is, if any citations were given by the police for either indecent exposure, defecation, intoxication, it sounds like we have, it sounds, you know, I know the good counselor from Ward One, and I know that her intentions are always well-placed, but I'd like to know if we have taken any actual action to cite folks potentially struggling with mental health issues or substance use issue, what those numbers look like, which is why I'm simply asking that the chief of police appear before us again before we make actual, consider, take actual action on this, on this point, so that we know exactly what we're solving for to, to prompt the installation of infrastructure that essentially, you know, essentially makes it really hard for people who are homeless. And we just talked about a couple hours about the affordability crisis in the city to sleep at a park bench. And so, I just, I just want that data, and then I'm happy to vote in favor of it, but I just don't see the data right now, and the chief isn't here to answer these questions, so I'd love to hear about them.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
This has been going on since June. It's an everyday thing. We've called the police, we've had Sudi go down there and take care of these people's needs every single day that we call. So, Sudi has been down there. We've had all kinds of people that go down there and talk to them, counselors, social workers. Excuse me? Thank you. Oh, sorry. So, I mean, we have done the work, and it's been an everyday problem. It started off with two people, ended up with ten people, then it got bigger and bigger and bigger. So, I just want my counselor to my right to know that we have done the work down there for three months, four months. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Council Janino.
Thank you. I think this is, I mean, I'm speaking on experience from working in that area years ago. I think it's more of a vagrant situation as opposed to a homeless situation, and it's more of a safety concern for the children in the school in that area for the upgrade of the benches than a homeless concern, based on what I've seen in the past down there, what I've done in the past down there, and safety issues. That's basically what I saw.
Thank you, councilor. Any other city councilors? Is he good? Okay. So, Madam Clerk, I guess we can have a roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of five thousand dollars for various improvements to Kimberly Park in Beauchamp? Council Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Council Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes, Council Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Council Harameo.
Clerk, is it too late to table this until we have the answer?
Point of order, we're in the middle of a roll call.
No.
No, Council Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number twenty-seven, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of Lauren Devella as a constable.
This will be referred to appointments.
Calendar item number twenty-eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Brittany Devella as a constable for the city of Revere.
This will be referred to appointments.
Motions, calendar item number twenty-nine, motion presented by Council McKenna that the city council order to a public hearing, an ordinance further amending Title 12 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to construction procedures for street and sidewalk openings.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is going to a subcommittee, but I wanted to just talk about National Grid. National Grid has come into our city and has cut strips of roadway, and they're leaving, what I just found out from Chris Charamilla, is they're leaving their old pipes underground, so it's like a graveyard, and they have no consequences to take them out. So, we have all these old pipes underneath the ground, they're putting their new pipes in, and after a certain bout of inclement weather and overuse from vehicles, these strips of asphalt that they're just, they're just covering where they put their work is sinking. A few examples is Wave Ave in Beauchamp, North Shore Road, Eaton Street, and hundreds of others. With all the money this city and our residents are paying this company, it is time to hold National Grid accountable for opening up streets and have them fixed the right way, which is curb to curb. That is why tonight I'm revealing an ordinance that National Grid should be responsible for fixing any cut, cutting of the streets, no matter how big or small it is, curb to curb, or make a donation to the city to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Any other councilors?
Yeah, I think Cogliandro is on this, too.
Council Cogliandro.
Is he?
No, but I fully support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This will be ordered to a public hearing.
Calendar item number thirty, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Novoselski that the mayor request Mastaut to repave the westbound side of Revere Beach Parkway from Thomas Sello Way to the intersection of Route 16 in the interest of public safety. This portion of Revere Beach Parkway is riddled with potholes. Council Zambudo is recused.
Council McKenna.
Thank you. I'm going to let Council Novoselski speak because he talked to someone today, but I just wanted to say that I didn't want it to be paved, I just wanted the potholes to be fixed. I don't know what, how they're fixing potholes these days, but it's horrible. So, I'm going to let Council Novoselski speak on this.
Council Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Council McKenna. I drive that road three or four times a day, and that section of the Revere Beach Parkway, Winter Ave, is the right-hand lane from Woods Ave down to Hillside. Very bad. Now, I talked to DCR today, and they said, you know, the holes really aren't deep enough to retain the asphalt when they put it in. So, I said to them, well, can we get it repaved? He said, well, now it goes up to Mastaut because that's part of their highway, and it's one lane, and it's, and the main reason for all this happening is because of MWRA because that's one of their main lines that pump water and take drainage from the top of the hill from Wallan Ave.[1781.56] Wall and Ave. So, if DCR really can't fill them the way they can be retained, then we have to ask Mastaut to repave just that one lane for about 300 feet. So, that's where we are. And I believe that's what the motion asks for, is the repaving of that section, if I'm correct.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have any other city councilors?
So, I would ask that this be approved the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Cogliandro that the mayor request the chief financial officer to provide the City Council with a comprehensive accounting of the Community Improvement Trust Fund from 2020 to present, including but not limited to all receipts and expenditures.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you. This speaks for itself, but if Counselor Cogliandro wants to speak about it, he can.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the permission, Counselor McKenna. No, I'm just kidding. I actually, I do want to make one small amendment to it, if you're agreeable, Counselor McKenna. At the end, it says, including but not limited to all receipts. After that, I would like to do, comma, expenditures, comma, and current account balances, just to make sure that we're thorough in that. Just curious about where the money that came and gone and all that good stuff, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think this motion is great. In fact, I made an inquiry to the CFO back in June, and in July, I did get some balances for each account. They were approximate, and they were for, up until March 31st. So, if I could just share what those are, Ward 1, $232,000. Ward 2, $538,000. Ward 3, $26,000. Ward 4, $39,000. Ward 5, $526,000. Ward 6, $151,000. And as a follow-up to that, I did ask for detailed information regarding the accounts, and I have yet to receive that information, which is why I'm in favor of this motion. However, I would like to amend the motion to include that we be given this information on a quarterly basis, so that the information would come, we would have updates regarding the information, and it would be a detailed accounting quarterly. Thank you. And I'd like a vote on, the motion is amended. Thank you.
Yes. Any other city councilors? Counselor Grino Sawaya?
I love the motion, and I've received a bunch of phone calls. So, I did a little bit of homework, and I promised the people that called me that I would explain what the CIT funds are all about, because a lot of people are asking what they're about, what we can do with it, why do we have it, and why is it separate. So, if you don't mind, I just want to read a quick paragraph of what I wrote. All right. The fund is tied to permitting and development, and it's aimed for offsetting impacts from increased development. So, when a developer obtains a special permit or variance that increases the intensity of the use, for example, if there's more unit, greater height, greater floor area, or building coverage beyond what is allowed by right, portions of that extra development trigger a required payment into the Community Development Trust Fund. The trust fund is held by the city treasurer, separate from all other monies in the city. The monies must be spent only for specific purposes, as approved by the mayor and the city council. So, what money can be used for, for example, would be infrastructure and public facilities directly impacted by the development, which includes the roads, the sidewalks, sewer, water, drainage improvements. That are part of the city's capital improvement plan. Recreation in open spaces, athletics programs, fire protection, school building, educational programs, as well as library improvements. That's what the CIT funds should be used for and are to be used for. So, when people ask, oh, what is a CIT fund? Why is it going there? And that's why it's going there, and I just wanted to be transparent with the people that did call me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Kelly, that's a great idea. Counselor Grino Sawaya, thank you very much for explaining that to the public. Are we sure quarterly is the consistency that we want? Do we want to talk, I mean, I'm just thinking about, since development is what, I hope we don't have a change every three months. You know what I mean?
I don't know. I think, I think building permits get pulled periodically for different projects, and I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we could start there, and if it's too much, or we could change it, sure. So, I did, through you, Mr. President, to the clerk, I don't know if you put something down. I kind of jotted something down here. I'm sure you have it, though, so.
To receive the reports on a quarterly basis from the CIT fund.
I did, I have that. And current account balances, and that was by Cogliandro, further
from Counselor Kelly, that the reports are sent to the council on a quarterly basis.
Perfect.
Thank you. As amended, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 32, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Cogliandro that the mayor request Mastaut to appear before the City Council to provide a comprehensive overview in full scope of planned work on, work on Harris Street and the surrounding area. Further, that the city engineer, DPW superintendent, and city planner be present at this meeting to offer additional context and address related concerns. Counselor Zambudo is recused.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. My biggest fear is when Mastaut and the city of Revere decided on what was going to happen to Harris Street. The change is going to inundate a quiet neighborhood like Sewell Street, Butler Street, Library Street, Bixby Street, and Elm Street. These streets have no sidewalks right now. Residents and children walk and play in the street. If Harris Street is made a one-way or a one-way and a half, I don't even know what they're doing. This will be a cutthroat for cars to get to their destinations. An app-like ways will take cars and trucks through these quiet streets as shortcuts. A year ago, years, a year ago, in this chamber, chambers, a public hearing on Harris Street was the topic. Many residents came to find out what was going to happen. As a result, the city of Mastaut was supposed to hold public meetings. Nothing was done, not even the ward counselors were informed. Now, the work has begun, and I'm asking for clarity. Inform the residents and the ward counselors with what will be happening. It's about communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
I think Mastaut needs to mind their business when it comes to Revere's streets.
Agreed.
End of story. Stop telling us what you're, what we're supposed to do to help you. You're doing all these changes to feed Suffolk Downs or to benefit Suffolk Downs in some way, and all you're doing is you are going to kill that neighborhood with traffic. You're going to absolutely kill it. Stop telling us what to do with our streets. Come before us, tell us what your plans are, and you have, you have a say over the state roads? That's fine. Leave the city roads alone. That's up to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councilors? Permission to speak?
I actually live right, right by there on the Parkway, and I hear your concerns. I have them, too, as I drive by there every day. I think it's a little bit too late. They've already made a turn that comes north. If you're going from, like, Bell Circle towards Chelsea, there's already a turn that can only go to Harris Street from that turn, and the island's already built in, and so I don't, I agree that we need DOT to come up here and explain. I don't know if it's too late. That's all.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pres-
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, it's supposed to be a 90-day condition. So, I, you know, if it doesn't work in 90 days, I don't know what they're going to do. But my concern is those quiet neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, that it's going to be a cutthroat. And what I'm hearing is it's going to be one-way, all the way down to Beach Street, and then a half, a quarter of the way to Sewell. So, all those, all those people are going to cut through Sewell. And, you know, I mean, it's going to inundate the poor, this poor, quiet neighborhood with no sidewalks, and the kids play in the streets. Cars come around the corner, you know how fast they go. So, it is a safety issue, too.
Absolutely.
So, that's, that's my concern, and that's Counselor Cogliandro's concern, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cogliandro.
She has the nail in the head. They, I feel like what's supposed to go on there has changed, and nobody seems to have the answer on what's actually going on with the traffic patterns in that street. Leave it alone. Otherwise, you are going to send every vehicle down Sewell Street. Sewell Street, I don't know if anyone has tried to turn down there, off of that intersection, or from the other way. It's two-sided parking, and I don't even know how they can fit an apparatus down there at the beginning of that street. It's so hard to get down there. You are going to inundate all the streets that Counselor McKenna just said. I don't want to go through them again, but they owe us an explanation, and we are the ones who should have a say over the one-ways, the stop signs, the everything. So, I hope that they hear us, and I hope that they actually come, because it would be a disservice to this city and the people that live in that area if they don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Counselor Grino Sawaya that the mayor request National Grid to immediately repair the trench that runs from John Avenue across the highway to 190 North Shore Road. The trench was created following utility work conducted under a Mastaut Highway Access Permit. Since that work, the trench has remained in a state of disrepair and is causing significant disruption to nearby residents.
Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. After completing the utility work under the Mastaut permit, National Grid left behind a trench that causes loud banging every single time a car or a truck drives by, and the ground shaking when the vehicles pass. I've heard several complaints from the residents over in Riverside, and Mastaut has confirmed that they've asked National Grid multiple times to fix it, and with no results. So, this is completely unacceptable, and the residents shouldn't have their lives completely disrupted the way, on a daily basis, the way it has been from a road left behind and left in poor condition. I'm asking that National Grid be held responsible and complete the repairs immediately in line with the Mastaut standards. And I think the mayor has already contacted them, and I'm praying that this actually gets repaired ASAP, because it's been a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Permission to speak?
So, I did actually get in contact with DOT. They did send out a representative, went to a resident's home, spoke with the resident. DOT decided it was, as the council said, on National Grid. National Grid sent someone down, and they made a determination that it's not sufficient enough for them to do the repair. That was as of two weeks ago, so I'm hoping with maybe this motion or whatever we can have forward, DOT will step up our National Grid. I just wanted to update you on that information. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 34. Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counselor Kelly that the mayor be requested to increase the discounts offered through the 2026 Water and Source Senior Discount Program for qualifying applicants by 10% accordingly, 40% for consumption of up to 30,000 gallons, 30% for consumption from 30,001 gallons up to 70,000 gallons, and 20% for consumption of 70,001 gallons or more.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just trying to, again, give the seniors another little bit, anything we can do to help them with the burdening bills that they're being faced with. The 10% came from the recent water increase that took place, so it's, it's trying to offset that. It's not going to correlate 100%, but it will, it will be a step in the right direction. I did speak to the water department about this. I spoke to Mr. Visque about this, and they had about 1,000 qualifying applicants last year. Mr. Visque did not seem to think that this would be something that would be out of the question. As an aside, I also want to point out that I did speak to him about getting the exterior water deduct meters for qualifying seniors covered under the Senior Home Improvement Fund, and I'm getting details on that as well, which will be another help. But I think for now, if we could look at this motion, whether it be in Ways and Means, or if it be the will of the council to vote on it tonight, if it should go to Ways and Means, I just ask that it be, the meeting take place rather quickly, so we can try to get this underway, because they can use any and all help that they can get. And this has, there hasn't been an increase in this from speaking to the water department in quite some time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Councilors Kelly and Cogliandro that the mayor request the election department to reinstate the Lincoln School as a polling location, beginning with the 2027 elections.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. This is just something that I've heard from a number of residents in Ward 3 that used to vote at the Lincoln School, and it was very convenient for them. And I contacted Counselor Cogliandro, being his ward, and I asked why this change was made, and he said he thought it was done, something done during COVID and the restrictions that were in place during COVID. So, after speaking to Counselor Cogliandro, we thought it was a good idea that maybe we try to reinstate the Lincoln School as a voting location in the future. Of course, it couldn't be done for this election, but surely maybe, you know, for the 2027 election, we could bring that location back. The seniors in particular have a difficult time getting to the high school to vote. It's difficult for them to even just make the drive there, to try to find parking there, to walk from the parking lot to the high school. So, this would be a much more convenient location, and I'm hoping that we can bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Kelly, for keeping me in the loop on this. I appreciate it. I tried to file something on this a couple of years back, but it is true that during COVID, we did some condensing of the polling locations. I mean, also, the other thing to take into consideration is that the map changed. Specifically, Ward 3 and 5 did a huge precinct flip, and that's where the high school came into play. But to Counselor Kelly's point, there's a lot of seniors, a lot of people who don't want to cross Broadway to go vote, and I think that this could improve the voter turnout in this city that is, has been incredibly low. So, I appreciate you bringing this up, and I hope you guys will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor McKenna?
I think this is a great motion. I just, I've heard from a number of people that live in Ward 3, and they don't, they said they don't vote. They don't, they won't go down to the high school and vote. So, I think this is a great motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 37, motion presented by Counselor Grino Sawaya that the City Council order to a public hearing in ordinance further amending the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance amendment strengthens the oversight and accountability in the sale of the transfer to city-owned properties by requiring the City Council's approval based on formal recommendation from key city departments and commissions. By involving the city department, the planning department, conservation commission, building inspector, engineering department, board of health, treasurer, and assessors, the city ensures that each transaction aligns with zoning laws, environmental protections, health and safety standards, financial obligations, and fear market value assessment. This collaborative, multi-departmental review process promotes transparency, and this is what people are looking for. It promotes public access and ensures that any disposition of property, particularly those affecting affordable housing, serves the long-term interest for the residents of Revere. So, for example, this past week, something went up on Gladys Street, I think it was, or Glen Deal Street, and I got, I want to say, 10 phone calls regarding, oh my God, they're selling a piece of property. What are they going to build there? No, they can't build on it, because it's not buildable lot, but they didn't, the people, the residents, all they did is they saw it, and they didn't know what it was about. So, they were nervous that something was going to go there, but the next-door neighbor could buy it and, and, you know, make his lot a little bit bigger. But they're not understanding that some, some of the parcels that are city-owned are not buildable, and what I'm trying to do is make sure that every department comes and explains what we can, what we can't do, and, and we know that we're being honest and we're being transparent to the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
All in favor. This will be ordered to a public hearing.
All in favor, this will be ordered to a public hearing on October 27th.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Counselor Gourinsoya that the city council order to a public hearing and ordinance further amending Title 12 and Title 17 of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to overhanging signs and storefront sign maintenance.
Counselor Gourinsoya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is another motion brought to me by a resident of Ward 5. This motion's about accountability and presentation. For example, I got a bunch of pictures sent to me of all the businesses on Revere Street, and actually, there was a couple that were on Broadway as well. Revere Street and other commercial, and our other commercial corridors are gateways to the city. When signage is neglected, faded, broken, or falling apart, it doesn't just reflect poorly on the business, it reflects poorly on our community as a whole. We already have, we already regulate signage through permitting, but what we lack is a clear requirement for ongoing upkeep. This amendment would ensure that businesses, business signs are properly maintained with a fair process in place, notice to property owners, reasonable time to correct the issue, and enforcement only if the problem remains. It's about protecting the safety, character, and appearance of our neighborhoods while holding businesses to a responsible standard. I spoke to a couple of businesses that I saw that their signs were all dilapidated, and I've already told them that this motion was going in and that I gave them, you know, a little bit of a warning ahead of time, and they were actually, oh yeah, we were planning on doing it, we're going to get it done ASAP, which to me means a lot, that they do want to take care of the city. So this is basically what this motion is about. I want people to care.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Cog Leandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Gourinsoya. What is the, how, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is when you look at a sign, how, who is going to judge if it needs to be replaced and what, what criteria are they going to use? And I'm just asking because I own a small business. We take care of our property, we take care of the sign, but, you know, if a tornado, for instance, touches down and the business might not be doing good, are we going to force them to spend the money? So I'm just curious what, what we're going to look for in saying, you need to replace that sort of thing.
Well, that would come from Michael Wells. I've already spoken, spoken to him about it. There, there wasn't an enforcement in place. And if you look at, for example, next to your business, there's the recording studio. All, all those, all those letters that are on their sign are missing. So those should all be either taken off or they should be replaced because aesthetically, it looks horrible. And, you know, when people are driving through, it's a reflection on the city of Revere, and it, it looks like we don't care when we do. So I just want them to keep up with their property, just like I would expect me to keep up with my property and make it look aesthetically pleasing.
Well, Mr. President, through you, will Director Wells have something in writing, do you think, by the public hearing that we can view? I know, like, next door to us is One Stop Variety or One Stop, I forget what the name is. I'm there every day. They just replaced their awnings, too. They just did a really good job on it, so just as long as there's something fair in place, that's all, because there's a lot of businesses in the city that are struggling. I'm just trying to look out for them, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be ordered to a public hearing October 27th.
Late motion presented by Council President Silvestri that the city council awards certificates of merit to Sergeant Shawn Matthews, Sergeant Keith Lesnar, and Officer Orion Kong of the Revere Police Department for their selfless actions on August 19th of '25 to run into a burning building prior to the arrival of the Revere Fire Department to ensure that all occupants were safely evacuated.
This motion speaks for itself. I will hold my comments till the night of the presentation. I appreciate your support on this. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Counselor Novoselfsky, you have a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, to everybody that is watching tonight and that's here tonight, the last meeting, I wish everybody a Jewish Happy New Year, which I thank everybody for, you know, referring to that to me as they saw me. But this coming Thursday is the highest holiday of the Jewish religion called Yom Kippur, or the Day of Atonement, and this is where your name is in the good book or the bad book. So, but I want, and we have to fast. This is the, one of the days that we fast for 26 hours. So I just want to thank everybody for their thoughts, and I want to wish all my Jewish friends a safe and easy fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna, you have a point of personal privilege?
Thank you. I'd like to do a point of personal privilege, a moment of silence. This week, Beachmont lost one of our matriarchs, Diane Ananziata. Diane Ananziata lived in Beachmont for over 65 years, and I would like to take a moment of silence to honor Diane and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, and that closes tonight's business. I'll see you next Monday.